I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberal government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. I'd like to welcome everyone to this, our second policy meeting of this school year. Before I turn it over, Ms. McLeod, I believe she's got, we've got two policies we're going to look at. One of them was, one, the first one will be the one we've agreed to bring back and look at again, see if we need to make any changes. Second one, I believe, is a new one, and the third one, we just have some general discussion. I think she may have an item or two on that, so, Ms. McLeod.
Your Honor, the first policy, I'd like to say, is policy 62304, discrimination, harassment, and bullying intimidation, which we called out in my last meeting, and Ms. Reed has completed the back policy, your consideration, I mean, passing, so I don't know what those changes are.
As you all may remember, this is one of the policy amongst several that we discussed at our last policy meeting several months ago. We were looking probably to enhance our anti-bullying policy and to update it a bit, and the section that we really had added to this was kind of the bottom of that leaf that says bullying, harassment, intimidation. We had added a section that says, "Rutherford County Board of Education is committed to provide all students a learning environment free from bullying or harassment based on race, color, religion, national origin, handicap, disability, ancestry, or gender, or for any other reason." Then we went on to say, "The school system expects all students to treat each other with civility and respect, and not to engage in behavior that is disruptive or violent. School system will not tolerate acts of bullying or harassment." We go on to say, "This policy addresses conduct that takes place on school grounds and any school-sponsored activity, or school-sponsored transportation, and any official school bus stop immediately before boarding, and immediately after leaving school transportation of any kind of students. Additionally, bullying and/or cyberbullying that begins off campus can be considered school-related if it interferes with school activities, causes a disruption at school, or interferes with the rights of students." So, "Students shall be provided a safe learning environment and shall be in violation of this policy for any student to bully, intimidate, or create a hostile educational environment for another student. Bullying and intimidation are defined as either physically harming a student, or damaging his or her property, or knowingly placing a student in reasonable fear of such, or creating a hostile educational environment." We also had a section here for cyberbullying as well, and we defined that as a subcomponent of bullying, and we said here, "Cyberbullying is defined as the use of information and communication technologies, including, limited to email, cellphone, pager voice, text, still photographed, or video messages, instant messaging, defamating personal websites, social networking sites, and online personal polling sites for journals, to support deliberate and hostile behavior pertaining to frighten, harm, or embarrass others." And that was another component of this that we had talked about adding to our policy. One of the things that we had discussed, that we left off with in our discussion last time this policy came up, was whether we wanted to have specific items in here for sexual orientation, or gender identity, expression, and appearance. The kind of consensus we had the last time we met was to leave the first paragraph of this anti-bullying policy, basically make it all comprehensive by adding "or for any other reason." So, rather than try to, you know, identify every group, or a little subcategory that might be bullied, or harassed, or whatever reason, whether that be because of their weight, because of their height, ancestry, race, or whatever, we wanted to add "in here or for any other reason." So, the change that is kind of brought to you tonight, where we left off at our last policy meeting, where we had in that first paragraph that we're committed to provide all students a learning environment free from bullying and harassment based on race, color, religion, national origin, handicap, disability, ancestry, or gender, or for any other reason. So, intent, I think, for that to be all-inclusive, and to not tolerate bullying against any student for any reason whatsoever, regardless of what purpose, or what reason that language behind the bullying. So, so that's a comprehensive type, type statement, that's the reason that we're using the language "or for any other reason." And that was the item we discussed when we were here back a couple months ago. So, this comes back to you, through your policy committee, for consideration tonight, with the language in here "or for any other reason," is what we've added to it from what we last discussed.
Ms. Reed, how does, how does this differ as far as encompassing from the state statute? Do you know?
Some of these categories, when you talk about, the state statute does not go abroad as we do here to specifically identify each of these categories that we've got listed. So, it says, the state statute just says we don't tolerate bullying because of the normal stuff, which is race, color, religion, so forth. Those are things that you typically see in governmental statutes. This one goes a little bit farther in the sense they're listing handicap, disability, ancestry, and national origin. So, we've got those categories in here. Don't have to have them in here, we have them in here. Now, we, I will address with respect to the handicap, disability category, now, we did have an issue with the federal government, where the federal government was not happy with us having that language in our anti-bullying policy. They wanted it in a separate policy, for their belief that was confusing to have handicap, disability reference in two places. But, in looking at it, I think, you know, if you're trying to make sure that people are not bullied against, I think handicap, disability is appropriate to have in this section until the federal government tells us otherwise. So, we've left that in here, and that has been in our policy for years.
Is there a proposal that, that's being presented to the state legislature, or are they presenting, appealing both houses that deals with this issue and maybe expands the verbiage?
There has been some proposed legislation, in the state legislature, to address some of these issues, yes. Whether that will make it through committee, whether that will ultimately be adopted, we don't know. But, yes, there is some proposed legislation that is being considered by the legislature.
We have another policy meeting in May to address legislative changes before we print our student handbook, right, Ms. McLeod?
Right.
So, I mean, the May meeting, whatever is done in the legislature, there's some things we know about and some we easily do not know about, but we'll try to correct those in May before we print that student handbook. So, just if you're wondering when, that's, that's why we have that May meeting typically.
General.
Go ahead. Mr. Reed, let me ask you, were you, have it included for any other reason? Couldn't that be kind of subjective to, based upon the principle, or who else? I mean, you know, one school might see certain types of bullying, and another school might not consider that the same way.
Well, you know, I think all principals need to have authority to kind of deal with situations in their school on a case-by-case basis, because all situations are a lot of, you know, that are usually different and distinct as the facts that are behind a particular incident that happens, you know? In some schools, a particular incident might be viewed as bullying when it may not, when you get to the facts of it, really be supportive of a bullying situation. So, the intent of having this language "or for any other reason" is not really in there to make it a subjective question, is as much as it is to allow a principal to take any action they think is necessary, that's appropriate for that particular factual situation that they're involved with. Because you can have, as, as you've seen in this policy, you know, you can have situations where students are victims of bullying outside of school that carries over into school.
Right.
And there's probably more and more of that going on with the internet and all that these days, and the opportunities for students to be harassed through the internet is much broader today than it was even a couple of years ago. So, you do want to have an expansive-type definition of bullying, harassing here as harassment, so that your principals have authority to do what they need to do to address whatever situations that may arise. So, when we talk about "or for any other reason," we're trying to do that with respect to that language.
Okay. But, I mean, I was thinking of situations where sexual orientation might be allowed in one school and not allowed in another school, or restricted, in other words. And I don't have a case in mind, Jim, I'm not having a case in mind, but I'm just saying, based upon the principal's view, could, could that, for any other reason, kind of give them?
Well, what this says, what this says, that we don't tolerate bullying for any reason.
Right.
So, it would not tolerate bullying for those with sexual orientation, or for any purpose whatsoever. So, the way this section reads, we do not, the school system is saying, as a policy, the Board of Education does not allow or tolerate bullying against anyone for any reason, including sexual orientation.
Right.
Well, in, in saying that, since you make that one sentence all-inclusive, you may be saying, in essence, you don't need the previous sentences to that point. Because if you say, indeed, we do not allow bullying, then we don't allow bullying. You see my point? So, you have included numerous reasons that a person could be bullied, and yet, we fail to include probably one of the reasons that most children, or that many children today face in their bullying. And I think, I think we certainly need to be aware of that, and that is the sexual orientation that they deal with, and it, as much as we might like to think, no, that's not a problem, it is a problem. And we read about it quite frequently in newspapers. I think the state is going to address that in an open discussion in the very near future, that verbiage. So, I don't know where we go with this, but if we're, if we're open to the edict of the state, then maybe we need to, again, pause, and, and look, look where they're going to go with this. Because certainly what they do, we don't have to change it once they set their policy.
Correct.
It will be done for us. So, that, that's, that's my position. I, I find it subjective, too, and I found one other thing, to be, in my warped way of thinking, maybe subjective, and that's if any behavior that is disruptive. And that, again, is a subjective thing, because, you know, I made kneel to pray, and that can disrupt a class, that can be subjective. Who, you know, who observes that? Have I disrupted class, have I not? So, this is a tender issue to deal with, I know, and a very difficult one to deal with, but it's one that's not going away.
And that kind of brings me back to my two points in our last meeting, you know, that we've always stayed with state statute, and, which is, which is our best course, and mandatory course at that. And with, with legislate, legislation, they are poised to possibly be enacted or not, you know, maybe your term, maybe pause here again, might be in our best interest to, to make this change and then have to make another change. Because the question I was going to ask is, normally, when legislation is passed, doesn't it usually kick in on July 1st? Is that, is that right?
Well, normally it does, they can make it, they can make it activated whenever they choose to activate it.
Okay.
So, it could take effect prior to that, or later than that, should they choose to do that.
And that may be, we may be better served to, to allow that legislation to work through its process, and then come back, like you said, Mr. Odom, in May, and look at it again, and, and we may, we may have our guideline there with the state statute.
There's certainly no reason that we have to address this or make any changes to our policy today. So, if it's the will of the committee to wait and address this after the legislature hasn't addressed it, and told us what they want to do with respect to the, the state statute, it's certainly something we can do as a policy committee. Sorry, we're not required to do anything. We don't have to take up this policy, we don't have to change anything today.
Mr. Reed?
Uh, Ms. Reed, in the last meeting, I asked you if you could find out why Plutnam County included the extra clauses in there? Did you find out why they did that?
They just, they were just added to the definition, you know, that's the, the anti-bullying policies differ from county to county. So, and some counties have brought more definitions, more little categories in them than other counties. The state statute itself is kind of, is, is, has the shortest prior definition of categories in it, and it's just something they've done over time, if there were legal reason behind it, other than the fact that someone decided to put it in their policy when they wrote it in. But not that it was legally required to put it, be put in there, it's just a category they wanted to adopt and put it in their policy.
I know, as a first grade teacher, with our student agenda, it really helps. When, excuse me, like today, in the cafeteria, I had busted this morning. But, with, with the dress code being very explicit, there was someone, a student in the cafeteria who had the razor cut, cleaning his hair, so it makes a design. So, it's much easier to point to the agenda to tell a parent, this is against, you know, school policy. So, I think something that's more definitive would benefit teachers if they're trying to designate what type of bullying it is. It's, it's easier if it's a more descriptive detail, something they can point to, to tell the parent, well, this is an accepted because, right, it's, that's just for us.
I think we'd all agree that if this is not enacted as it's written now in the, in the two bills that are in the state legislature, that it will be enacted in the not-too-distant future. I think we would all be in agreement to that, I may be wrong, but I would not be in agreement to that. You don't think that the state will enact that, is what you're saying?
No. What you said was that if the state does not act, that it would come eventually anyway.
If, if it doesn't pass this year, it would pass, is what I'm saying.
I don't.
You don't, you don't agree with that?
I don't agree with that.
Anybody else? I'll make a motion that we table this to see what direction the legislature takes and revisit it in our, in our May policy meeting.
My second.
A motion by Mr. Blair, and second by Mr. Eeks, to table this. Any further discussion?
Further discussion? I would add that as we continue to watch this issue, the Federal Department of Justice has put out a Dear Colleague letter, which is their way of just saying, here's something to consider. And it goes beyond the language that we currently have that says that bullying and intimidation are defined as either physical harming a, a student, or damaging his or her property, or knowingly placing the student in reasonable fear of such, or creating a hostile educational environment. They have taken the burden of creating a hostile educational environment, and they are suggesting whether or not a hostile educational environment is created. If a hostile educational environment could have been created by the actions, that they would consider that bullying. And so, they are moving in a direction that would broaden the definition of bullying, even though everyone involved in the circumstance may have understood no harm intended, no offense was, was intended. If anyone could have perceived those actions to have been bullying, even though the parties involved may not have been considering that to be bullying, they would still say that that action was bullying. And that was something that was pointed out in the recent, in the recent advocacy conference that the board sent me to, and I wanted to bring that to the board's attention and to this policy committee's attention. Again, something that we'll watch as we move toward May to consider this again.
Anybody else? In favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And a pos. Motion passes, number two, Ms. McLeod.
Number two is adoption of a new policy regarding concussions. They have in their packet a draft, this is TSBAs model policy. This is required now because of the legislative change, requiring treatment for concussion, identifying concussions. Could become aware of it, and there must be treatment for the concussion. We must receive doctor's information back if the child is unable to participate in athletics. We also are required to train all of our coaches and athletic staff and principals about concussions and about the policy. We have been doing this for several years. It's probably three years ago, doing concussion training, and requiring a lot of this information. T double S double A has required forms that we submit, so it's just a more standardized process now. But it is required that we adopt a policy, and this is TSBAs recommended policy.
Any questions, comments?
How do we document an occurrence?
They have forms, T double S double A has now provided those standardized forms that we fill out once we know the concussion, and the doctor fills out a form, and it's back, and they're ready to proceed again, and then all of that is kept on file.
I know that we provide football training staff and such in an environment with high school football, where we anticipate that this may be a specific concern. But in other athletic events, we train the coaches. Are there any additional steps that we, that we put in place similar to the additional medical staff that we have at a football game?
About the additional staff, I don't know about. Now, the training, we will do equally amongst all athletics. And of course, the forms will have to be submitted, and kept on file, and all that documentation kept, but now I don't know about personnel trainers and that sort of thing, if that's what you're asking about at, at all, but I'm not sure.
I don't know about that, some of your trainers are students, too, so I don't know in that sense.
Well, let me say, the referees are aware of it, they, they're on the lookout for it in every game. About three years ago, maybe four years ago, they had the authority to not let a kid back in. Then about two years ago, that changed because schools and parents were raising all sorts of cane about it. And so, they took the authority away from the referees, and now it looks like they have put the onus on the schools about the concussions, where it should be. But still, I believe the T double S double A, I mean, the referees send up a report to T double S double A saying, we had these many concussions, and who the kid was in the game. So, that's kind of a roundabout way, and T double S double A will contact schools and say, we need a letter, or whatever, before this kid can go back in.
When we have basketball, or baseball, or wrestling activities where there is not medical staff present to evaluate and at least give an assessment of, of whether or not a concussion has occurred, I have heard of instances where a concussion may be diagnosed afterwards, and maybe the school does not hear about it. And my only concern is that when we're talking about a, a policy of this nature, and I have not had the opportunity to read this entire policy, but I wonder, is there an opportunity for us to compel any additional participation, or something of that nature, to reveal to us that there has been a concussion? You know, I, I don't want to hear about it after the fact, when somebody, you know, has a repetitive injury, well, we didn't hear about the fact that you were diagnosed. In football, we've got medical staff there, they see the incident, they evaluate the, the student, there's a reasonable expectation that we would have caught a concussion. But if we're still seeing, seeing stars, you know, that evening after the wrestling match or something, and we go by and see a doctor of our own effort and everything, I just wonder, how does that get communicated back to our coaching staff?
Aaron, to let you know about football, usually it is not the coaching staff or the medical people on the sideline that catch the concussion. It is the referees on the field who sees this kid, and, you know, we, we can recognize it pretty quick. Because the kids kind of seem to hide it from when they go off the field, or if they do go off the field. Sometimes they get the bell rung in a play, and they're jumped right back up, or, you know what I'm saying, they get up and play again. We're on the lookout for that. Also, in baseball, I can tell you, being an umpire there, we keep up with, you know, who gets hit, and who, who gets their bell rung there, and we will not let them back in the game, because in fear of that, well, that mom and daddy will sue us if we let that child back in.
Well, I'll tell you, that, that the training is, that's required, is in an effort, and it's, it's very thorough. And when we did the training several years ago, it was medical professionals, we brought in to do the training. So, it teaches our people to recognize the signs and symptoms, to ask the right questions, look for the right things, so that hopefully our folks are trained well enough to know, we see somebody get hit, you start asking the right questions, you're looking in the right places. If we, if you notice, the policy says, if we see any sign or symptom, we are required to pull them out, and then, until they are evaluated by a doctor, and then given the note again. So, that's, the purpose of the training, I think, is to help us be prepared to do that.
I think a lot of your coaches and your people associated with that know and feel that responsibility, but potential for liability not to act on its own when they see something like that. And you could pass anything, say, the parents would have to tell you if they were late, but your problem that you run into there, it's hard to enforce that, and so what may happen is, you may have people that actually have concussion, then stop telling you at all.
I understand that.
And that, that would, that would be worse than not reporting it to us.
I certainly agree, and I, I don't want to create a situation where concussions are being swept under the table or concealed. However, it seems that the board is charged with the responsibility to look after the school system, and if there was that policy in place that said, you are required to let the board know if you seek medical treatment during your season of activity, or something like that, you have to let your coach know that, then we would be protected from not knowing that a concussion had, had occurred. And I'm not, I'm not seeking to create a situation where it's swept under the rug, but I do feel a responsibility to protect the school system from certain liability. I have heard firsthand knowledge from a parent of a wrestling student in our county who suffered a concussion, and yet, it was never reported to the coaching staff because they wanted to continue to participate. And that gave me some concern. I'm glad to see a policy that says, we are training our staff, you know, for concussion intervention. And yet, at the same time, I know of this at least one specific situation where medical treatment was sought, it was documented, and then there was continued participation. How are we protecting the school system from repetitive injury liability in that kind of circumstance? If we're looking at a concussion policy, I think it's worth considering.
Any comment?
Now, let, let me say this, too, though. We, and we have coaches, and I'm not saying our, our county does, or our school system, but I know in, in Mr. Odom's son, Lockett's vows for what I'm saying is that the T double S double A required the officials to fill out a form, or give a form to the coaches to fill out when a kid got concussion. That form had to be signed by a doctor before he could come back into play. Coaches were faking doctors' names. They were taking a, a student who, who was all there to bandage up somebody's leg, having them sign the form so they could go back in the game that night. sign the form so they could go back in the game that night. That was, that was coaches doing that. I'm not saying our school system did, but I know of other schools that did that. So how do we protect ourselves from coaches like that? We need to think about that. I mean...
Well, the reality, and I've had a lot of the same experiences that you're referring to, parents are even wanting their child to participate at times when they shouldn't participate. You know, you can walk the kid to the sideline and tell the coach, coach, this kid can't stand up, he can't make it to the line of scrimmage. And that coach is, like you say, he's looking for a way. Now, again, we're not putting the onus on anyone in particular, but athletics are competitive, very competitive, they're competitive. It starts with many times, apparently.
When it is a star running back...
But the athlete wants to play, the athlete wants to be in the game.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you take a star running back for that team who is on the verge of going to the state championship or whatever, you know, they're going to get that kid back in there any way they can.
Mr. Reed, is there value in including in this policy language that requires that medical treatment related to a concussion that may occur during a student-athlete season be reported to the coaching staff?
I think that would benefit the school system, yes, to have the information.
I think it would too. And I think that this is the appropriate place to put it in. I know that T double S double A has not put it in, but I think that it could potentially help protect our school system.
So you're saying something like, parents of a child who has had a head injury are required to notify the Board of Education?
I wouldn't require them to notify the Board of Education, I would require them to notify their coaching staff. Is that appropriate, or do we need to require them to notify the Board of Education? I'm satisfied with the coaching staff who is trained.
I would, I would go, I would err on the side of the administration myself.
Okay.
Any child that has sought treatment or a head injury?
It's part-time, that's all I...
Yeah. I mean, it certainly allows the school system, it puts, it helps everyone to shoulder the responsibility when there's an injury that has happened, to make sure not only the parents are aware of it, the coach, coaches are aware of it, the school system is aware of it as well. And at times, that may not be, we may not be aware of it. Because for the very reason we've all talked about, the student itself, himself, or herself, may try to hide it. The parents may hide it for whatever reason. So we, and the school system, we're, I mean, we may not be in the best position to know whether a head injury has occurred or not. So I do think that's a good responsibility of the parents, and maybe the student himself or herself, to notify us when they suffer these type of injuries. We can talk about who may be best person to keep it within the school system and discuss that. I don't know, I mean, I guess my initial thought is you probably would not want coaching staff keeping up with that. Would that fall under the new part-time athletic director?
I mean, you could, he's there part, he is part-time, so...
Well, that's what I was going to...
Or whatever it is.
Going to say that not only does he keep up with it, but he talks to the T double S double A and gets their info on concussion being reported.
So we're talking, we're saying basically, if a parent takes it to a medical provider, and they have this diagnosis, then they need to inform them, we need to put a timeframe on it, it's some of the most reasonable time, don't wait a week or two, or not just during the season, but immediately is whatever we can.
So are we talking about injuries that occur other than in school athletic events, or? I mean, if a kid's playing basketball at home and has a concussion, you're asking a parent to notify us for that, if they were diagnosed, or if they know that the child started noticing a concussion after a football game because we didn't know it?
One sport I was thinking of is rugby. I don't think rugby is covered under T double S double A, that's a whole different organization. And yet, they play on our fields, and there are some kids that are playing, so that's a whole nother ballgame there that we consider.
So what's the consequence if a parent doesn't notify the principal?
There are no consequences. It only comes up that if a repetitive injury litigation is brought against the school system, and part of that argument is, you have a policy in place, you were supposed to be watching out for concussions. Well, you went and sought medical treatment outside of Rutherford County, how were we to know that this child had already suffered a concussion when you never informed us of that? If we have no policy that says that they were supposed to have let us know, and we could then take that into consideration for continued participation, then we're at a loss. And it seems to be that with concussions, it's a repetitive injury circumstance that we're trying to avoid. As such, having knowledge of some type of outside occurrence or outside diagnosis seems to be applicable.
Maybe for the students who are involved with school-sponsored sports. If you're not involved with a school-sponsored sport, I don't know if we need to be aware of it, if they're not engaged in some kind of sporting activity at school.
But, but I mean, on a concussion itself, not the doctor or anything, but having, say for instance, they rent a car wreck and had a concussion on Thursday, and they come to play on Friday, and they get, they get their bell rung in, that could be permanent damage after that. And they, knowing some parents, they would seek millions against us. Well, you let my kid play, you know, and then we didn't, we don't have anything that says, well, you should have reported it. I mean, I'm with you, Aaron, on what you're saying.
Who would that?
Well, we can write up something along these effects, if we want to try to do this tonight, do you want to bring this back later to do it?
Let me, and there's one of the, one of the forms that's required to be filled out as a parent, athlete and parent concussion statement, just to read through the things that are on there. Concussion is a brain injury which should be reported to my parents, coaches, or medical professional. A concussion can affect the ability to perform everyday activities such as think, balance, and classroom activities. A concussion cannot be seen, sometimes symptoms might be present right away, while others can show up hours or days after the injury. I will tell my parents, my coach, and medical professional if available, available about any concussion-related symptoms. If I think a teammate has a concussion, I will tell my coaches, parents, or medical professional if available. I will not return to play, gain, or practice if a hit to my head or body causes any concussion-related symptoms. There goes up to say they'll complete the required forms. After a bumper blow, drop to the head or body, an athlete should receive immediate medical attention. Sometimes, repeat, concussions can cause serious and long-lasting problems, even death. I have read the concussion symptoms on the concussion information sheet, which is another form, the athlete and the parent sign and initial each one of those. I mean, there is some statement saying I will report.
Yeah, that certainly covers it.
Yeah.
A mere mention of it here, as this is the highest policy on this topic, being a Rutherford County School Board policy, just a mention of, you know, reporting any other occurrences or medical treatment by a student-athlete, you know, is required.
And that they do, we do cover all of those forms in that required training.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, saying that prior to initiation, practice, competition, all students and their parents shall review the important, the information that I just read to you.
And that is perfect information, that's, that's exactly what we want to cover. I just don't want to miss it in this, the highest policy.
Are they all signing this now?
We need to adopt a policy.
Okay, but they're not doing any of this, on this form?
Yes, we are doing it.
Okay.
What sports does it cover?
Because as a matter of fact, we just had this discussion with TSBA and T double S double A last week, because there was some concern that as broad as it's written, the law, the way the statute's written, that it would even cover band, draw, those kinds of things. They have to confirm with all those, read the comments of statute, those sort of things. It's only athletics that it applies to. So to answer your question, even though that is not a T double S double A sport, we will use the same process for rugby because it is an athletic event.
Cheerleading as well?
Cheerleading as well.
Excellent.
So we are required to adopt a policy, so we do need to adopt something now. If we want to come back and add to it, or want to make changes, that'd be fine, but we do need to do something now.
But basically, with the form you got, is covering what Ms. Holliday's wanting anyhow, correct?
I think it does. I think it, you know, lets them know that they need to report it. It's also covered in the training, you know, that they'll have to, the coaches will have to do, and to cover with them again, that we need to know this is happening and...
We could put that form in administrative procedure. We need to, couldn't we?
We could, I mean, it's required to be built, to be used right now under this policy. So we could make it a procedure, I'll just change it if the essay wrote that and be revised.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair, and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this policy? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. General discussion.
I just wanted to cover just briefly, you've all been given a pack, a folder with your name on it, and this is some information provided by some citizens in the community that's terrible in the board members, and I'm trying to explain their concerns about the bullying policy and the language that they would like to be included in the bullying policy, which is the language that's in the proposed bill for the legislature now. So that's just for the information. Also, just a follow-up, one of the other things that those groups mentioned, that was then worth adding some additional requirements to our student club's policy, and Mr. Odom and I are talking to principals about those issues now, get some feedback from them. We do think that if there are any of those changes needed, that they would be more procedural than policy-related. So we'll review that over next month, and obviously, we need to change the policy, we bring that back to you.
Okay. Could you give us an update in May, the next meeting?
I have also placed in your folder, board members, the 2014 fact book, which James Evans would compile each year. There's a letter in there, should be, that we are going to give to the commission, probably Thursday night. I think it's, kind of gives some information to them about Rutherford County schools, about our growth, how fast we're growing, and that sort of thing for information. Should be very useful to you as you meet with your constituents and other people that's involved, so wanted y'all to have a copy of it, because I think, I think we need to sell the urgency of our growth and what's going on associated with that. So we add, one of the pages that, when we first discussed some of this with Health and Ed Committee, some of the questions that came up, well, how much is Rutherford County's percentage of the total cost of a student? It's 39.04 percent. So we actually added another page in there, which comes from the state of Goodfords, and basically does add that information. So that's over about page four or five, something like that, I think, in that, so...
Anybody else told us?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to express my understanding and belief. I, like others, and Mr. Cloud, met with certain individuals from the community who did indeed express that there is a sincere concern about bullying specifically on the topics of sexual orientation and gender identity. And those arguments are certainly appropriate and real. My concern is, I do feel an obligation that whatever we put in policy, we have not only the obligation to be able to express and define it for parents, but also for the students that fall underneath that policy as well. And defining for a student what sexual orientation is, what gender identity is, is a daunting task. Defining it for a seventeen-year-old, defining it for a kindergartner. And when we put in place a policy at the board level, we take on that obligation. And so I appreciate this policy committee's consideration and continued deliberation on the subject, and yet, at the same time, keeping in mind, as we put in place these policies, we put in place an obligation to define what these things are. And I'm quite comfortable with the language that says that we do not allow bullying under any circumstances. We take note of the federally protected classes that the judicial system requires for us to identify, so that we have put forth due diligence in identifying who we are intending, and yet, we also include any other circumstance, which is a broad scope that says bullying is simply not tolerated in Rutherford County schools. It absolutely should not be tolerated for any circumstances in Rutherford County schools. And yet, I think caution is still the order of the day when we face the challenges of defining for the general public what these terms, classifications, and circumstances are.
Does your, Mr. Bartol, your teachers go over that handbook, basically, with students at the start of the year, y'all?
Yes.
Do you do that?
Yes, we do. Generally do that, again, send that home, and have those papers turned off and brought back in. Generally, done the first two, three days of school.
I want to emphasize too, just to follow up on that, that when we do trainings with principals, and we talk about bullying, and reporting, and all the things that go along with that, if you look at that definition in our policy about what bullying is, it says bullying and intimidation are defined as either physically harming a student, damaging his or her property, knowingly placing a student in reasonable fear of such, or creating a hostile educational environment. So what we focus with them on is, when you're investigating, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for, did it create a situation that caused one of those things? So our focus is on what happened, and how did that person feel, not necessarily on what led to. So I just want to emphasize that we're training people to look at what happened and what resulted. So just so the board understands, and the community understands, that, you know, we're looking at, did it create that situation? Is that, is this an instance of bullying, and that's what bullying is? So not to say that it's not important, but our focus is on, you know, getting faced with circumstances that led to that situation, and then deciding, was it bullying, was it not bullying, do we need to proceed in another way? And if it was, doing the appropriate reports that identify then what the reason was.
Agreed.
Agreed, yes.
Anybody else?
I mean, we can write the best policy we can come up with, but still, I'm going to stop it. I mean, bullying is bullying, and we don't have those issues, we have to deal with them. I hope it's far between.
And the issue we can deal with is, does it create that dilemma that you're talking about? Does that student withdraw from the learning environment?
Are they harmed physically?
Right, due to the, yeah, physically, of course, that's, you know, cut and dry. But when we try to get into the mind of people, and why they did what, we're lost, we'll never, we'll never get there. But yes, if it impacts their opportunity to learn in this system, yes.
Ms. Bush, do you want to say anything on this?
Oh, we're having, are you having a Health and Education meeting on Thursday?
No, Health and Education.
Okay, TDA's coming in, having some part. I know this has been in the media a lot lately about the trouble with T-Boss, so we appreciate anybody coming to listen to exactly what they have to show about why we shouldn't use that to teachers, not getting their licenses renewed. So we really appreciate a strong turnout for that, and hope that everyone can come out, and welcome to see them. We'll have refreshments. Not alcoholic, of course.
Anything else? Once again, I appreciate everybody coming tonight, and Ms. Cloud, she'll get with everybody probably end of April or something for May's meeting, so if there's nothing else further, we're...
Tomorrow night, you've got to feel the mention tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, six thirty. Got the zoning meeting out at Buchanan, Whitworth, Buchanan, so...
And where is it? I mean, in the building itself?
It'd be in the auditorium. Be there, have your listening ears on. Be there, have your listening ears on. I was going to say something to Smar Alex. I'm glad I didn't. Nothing else for our joint.